October seventh, twenty twenty-one Selectmen's Meeting to Order. All three Selectmen are present and the Town Administrator. Leo Martell will be videotaping for the public. And Lyndon Nickerson will. Okay, I have some old business here. Meeting minutes from September thirtieth.
I'll make a motion to approve the six thirty P M non-public minutes of September thirtieth as written.
Say again.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hold is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No signature for me.
And I'll make a motion to approve the seven P M minutes on September thirtieth as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the seven fifty-four non-public minutes of September thirtieth as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I want to thank my fellow Selectmen for running that meeting without me. Take care of that business while my voice was healing up.
We didn't have a chair anymore, I thought we both were.
Oh, there you go. I'm gonna open it up now for public comment. Okay, nothing. Bring it back to town business. We get an invoice in this week for Fairfield, which is the company that put our lift gate on our town transfer station truck. Anybody twelve hundred dollars? And this this bill is disputed because they did put the aluminum lift gate on, but they used some. They used a display model, they used some metal parts that were not brand new and they're all rusted up already. So we're gonna write a letter back to them. Uh with Woody's help on the discrepancies. Uh they originally told us we didn't owe any more a few weeks back and then we got this invoice in the mail, so.
I would make sure you mentioned that in the letter.
Yep.
They communicated that they were square with them.
Okay, let's clear that. The next item on the agenda is speed bumps on the roadways. Uh speaking of Cary Road, continued from the nine thirty meeting. So we had a resident come in. And the guys kept me in the loop on this. Asked if they could put speed bumps on the road. Originally, our road agent had thought there was no problem with doing it down in the um Gorm Pond area. And in re-talking with him this week, he can understand the Selectmen um. At least from my point of view, have decided that it's not a good idea to allow residents to put speed bumps on town owned or maintained roads and non-maintained roads. Anybody else want to fill in on any of that?
Well, the thing is, I hear the the resident is who brought the folks here at the Z.
Okay.
The police department communicated to me this week that they're firmly against it. And uh in the sense that if you open it up for this neighborhood, there'll be other neighborhoods who will ask the same thing and will have speed bumps against around the entire town, which would be ridiculous a little bit, they felt. However, they said um they will respond. Obviously, there's a problem with speeding in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, there's constant speeding.
And so the the police department has assured me, uh and the liaison to police department, they will increase the patrolling in that area to uh keep and things. I'd like to talk to someone down there also to know the exact times when you think the speeders are going too fast. And so they'll increase the uh the patrols in that area. So not that just to blow you off and say no, uh they want to do something to at least help solve the problem.
Right, well, we'll watch the time a little bit better and see what happens.
I would, I would, the recommendation is communicate that with Sergeant Reminer of the uh, he's a sergeant. He will take the information down and distribute it with the patrol. But the thing is, they just don't want to give it a, you know, bully, brush you off. They they want to do something, but they the police department is firmly not, uh they don't want to see speed bumps. Because I would said a president across the entire town saying Leo wants one in his neighborhood, Bob wants one on mine and mine, the thing is, I go out mine and six, six thirty in the morning, all the people cutting across in my neighborhood to where I, I mean, I my dog's looking and zooming by and they're not going thirty-five, they're going like forty-five. And so the thing is, and I said, geez, maybe I should put a speed bump out too, but once we start that down the path, it's unmanaged. And so that's how I'm I'm viewing it, so. But the thing is, but police department will uh work with the residents on the increased patrol.
Bob, did you have anyone to add to that?
Not, no, not really, I mean, uh you know, unfortunately, I'd like them on my road just so I wouldn't have to replace the mailboxes lately, but uh it's a state road.
Leo, you like your hand up too?
Yeah, so um Mike, in speaking with Remillard, Sergeant Remillard, it was uh was there any discussion about speeding tickets being issued?
That's something I was gonna have, because I I I'm gonna have that with him, because um the police department, at least they share the philosophy with him, he likes to educate the people first. But sometimes, sometimes uh a mild slap on the hand does nothing. But the thing is, you get one, a good swift kick and sometimes you get a speeding ticket, it wakes people up sometimes. So that's a discussion, the police department, they gave me the impression they wanted to warn, give warnings first.
Well, you know, I think they give way too many warnings out.
Okay.
The signs say it themselves, speed limit. That, I don't see what they need to educate all about. You know, I guess once in a while you can catch somebody and, you know, you say they they're going a little faster than normal or something. Different circumstances come up and I understand at some points, but you know yourself, I see them speed through the center of town, they speed on my road, your road, they speed on every road. They're supposed to serve and protect and serve, that's not protecting.
I will um take that forward, and the thing is, what do the Selectmen feel about that?
Well, we've, it's kind of a two-sided sword, because we have kept that philosophy with our department, that we do like them to try and educate the residents and not, you know, give a resident a ticket after ticket and and keep going. I think they work a pretty fine line with that, and I think that if somebody's really aggressive, I know they do it. And if somebody's a repeat offense person, I know they do it. And I've been watching, they give out about a third to two-thirds not, and when you look at their reports. And I've been watching it for quite a while now, and it's something we've kind of asked them to do.
Right, and and fairness to residents, because they're, you know, part of our community.
Yeah, well, you know, I I see the same people speeding all the time.
Right.
So, you know, if you start dishing out speed uh fines, maybe the word will get out and, you know, when my kids were younger, I always used to tell them, if you're gonna try to do something wrong going through Gothstown, they're gonna get you right away.
Right.
So take it easy and do everything right, and that was the word, and everybody then knew that. Gothstown was tough, be careful. So the problem here is everybody, and there's so many new people in town, I don't see what you have to educate them for. Do you have to have them come in in the community center, sit them down and explain to them the rules? Because the sign says speed limit thirty, and as Mike said, then next thing you know, they're doing fifty, because they're in a rush regardless of the speed limit. In the meantime, somebody's walking their dog or something's going on and they take the chance. They're supposed to serve and protect. That's my attitude.
Okay.
And I guess my my point is, I guess education, if you're going a little bit over the speed limit and you stop, you stop and talk to them, especially on narrow, winding roads.
Yep.
But when they're doing fifty in a thirty, I mean, come on, you don't have to educate someone. They know what they're doing.
Yeah, and I think they do take it to people that are heavy speeders.
Well, the thing is um.
Well, it's a good conversation though for Mike to have with them.
Yep.
You know, to reassure.
In a problematic area, maybe worthwhile to put a little more emphasis on that.
Excuse me, but one more point here. All right, so the speeders, I'll tell you, I know somebody personally that actually was coming to my house. The police came in my driveway, stopped her, she was doing eighty coming through town, and they let her go.
That's because she was in your driveway.
They they stopped her, they went and talked to her, and then they said, and then they gave her a warning. Eighty miles an hour, my wife said, do I go talk to them and kind of smooth it out? I'm like, oh, no, I'm not.
I'll have a discussion with the police department, just to get a a a form of philosophy. Is that, that's, that sounds like.
I think that was a judge as well.
The thing is, it's it's one thing for us that, you know, we can dictate, but again, we don't want to micromanage how they give out tickets and enforce the law.
And I understand that, but I think you should bring it to their attention that they should, like I said, they're supposed to protect and serve.
I think in this area where it's, where any area where it's problematic, I think it could be a service, a wake-up call, and that's what I'll talk to them about.
Hey, other question. They were thinking about putting a stop sign there instead of speed bumps. Would Gary and Gorm Drive come together? Would that be a possibility?
I'll discuss that with them, I don't, I don't know. Thing is, usually um I got educated a little bit when I discussed it this past week with them. Just to change speed limit in there, you have to do a traffic study to do a correct speed limit reduction or elevation, but there's gotta be a like a traffic study. And historically in this town, we have not been as judicious as we could have been in establishing some other speed limits. I'm not sure about stop signs. The thing is, uh in fact, I think I have one I could give you. And the thing is, I I think we'll talk to the police department. The one that, I have one at the end of my street, which is uh, I would say ninety percent of the neighborhoods of of the people go through there do not stop for it. And I feel like just taking it out and making people honest.
Well, they come down Gary Road, now last week I was sitting on the porch, the guy come down in a Mazda. He went halfway through before he stopped.
Or sometimes they don't even stop, no, I I hear, I hear, okay, uh that's something I have to stop.
Another thing they do, they just whoop right around.
Before we do anything, we'd like to input from the police department and our road agent, I think, too. Okay, on on this time, but that, we'll take that for our study.
Because they mentioned they're doing that too, putting a stop sign up, because if they come down, they gotta stop.
Okay, Fred?
What about a simple thing like I've seen in other towns, smile, you're on radar. They don't know.
Right.
Need one of those cameras where it sends them the ticket. Reads it license plate, mails them the ticket.
Told the old squad car out that's parked up here in the ways. And for community service, they have to wash it.
Right.
Before we go on, we got one other guy.
Um I'm down the other end of Holiday Shore, and there's speeding on Holiday Shore besides on on Gorm Drive. Uh we have a park there. As was pointed out, last week, there's a fifteen mile an hour speed limit, but we think that might be questionable as to how that appeared. But I think thirty miles an hour is way too fast for that road, so what would it take, number one, to get a traffic study? We we do pay our taxes on time and it would be nice to get a traffic study. Number two, what would it take to get speed bumps in?
You know, if you guys came in a month earlier, we just wouldn't have paved the roads.
Yeah, I know that.
So that it's slow, you know?
I waited, that didn't slow them down at all, and I got to see one of my neighbors that is speeding by.
I'll ask for the traffic study, what it, what it takes to get that.
Yeah, I mean, if it if it's a matter, because I'd like to get a twenty mile an hour speed limit for that park. It's between two telephone poles, nobody drives there. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the people going through that park walk.
I know there's an association, I have two residents here, there's an association down there, I think of the a flavor of the association. What the association would want, that's a, that's an association of residents, correct?
That's a, yes, the Lake Gorm Association, which I'm vice president.
I'd like to get a uh a feeling for what the residents feel as a group, not just one person, but I think a group would be good too.
I want to be careful not to open up too big a can of worms, because I I don't want to go down the presence where we're changing every road in town too.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, I want to be careful here, because, you know, everybody, people speed on every road in town, let's face it. Speed on my road, I got a dead-end road, they speed on Bob's road, they speed on Mike's road and all of your roads, I mean, we gotta kind of be careful, we don't want to run around having, you know, the speed limit going up and down.
I'm gonna defend, the only thing about Gorm Pond, it's very, that's probably the most, other than the center, like most congested part of town.
Yeah.
And and the thing is, so I I I my heart's out to them, and things, that's what I'm concerned with.
Two guys could barely fit down the road for you.
Well, yeah, and in fairness to our road agent, when he, he had his work cut out for him to try to get the paving done, because that truck took up the whole road. So basically, when they started paving down the end of Holiday by the uh by the uh the the uh cul-de-sac and worked their way down, there was no getting around it, because there was just no place for them to go.
But being congested, I I do agree with Dave, so we have to come to a meeting here, which is a set, a common sense thing that would be applicable across the town too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking to some of the residents, uh I've had some conversations with a couple of people on Holiday Shore, and they're all for like, we've got to get it to be slowed down, but why can't the town put that in and then take it out if it's if it's a a road thing where you don't want residents putting in speed, speed bumps, speed humps? My, I talked to Jeff last week and I mentioned to him, I said, I'd like to see something like they've got around the Manchester Post Office, there's speed humps, they're paved and they're permanent. All you have to do is slow down, they've got them in the mall of New Hampshire.
One question though.
Yeah.
Is it, who's speeding down there, is it the re- the fellow residents, is it the resident against resident usually? I mean, I don't go down there just to go speeding, who goes down there to go speeding?
Residents, there's people that go down the end to walk, to hike the trail.
Yeah, a lot of people go to the end to hike. I, we we had, we yelled at a car the other night, it was, uh they were doing about forty to forty-five, and it was a white Honda C R V, and it was hiker, and they were going down to Cucano to go walking down there. So, and we also have uh an Airbnb on that road, so we have transits from Connecticut and every place else and New York and and New Jersey, so we've got, you know, other people there. But, you know, we also have a lot of kids there, anywhere, have a lot of dogs that aren't leashed or whatever. We have a lot of uh new mothers walking their babies and walking a dog at the same time. They can't even walk down the street without cars going whiz and by. My wife and I walked down a snook on Gorm Pond Road and back, and we're almost getting hit on that, and that's goes from Dunbar into Gothstown, and they're doing fifty, sometimes sixty miles an hour, but we're wearing vests so that they can at least see us.
Would you be the point of contact for the police department to talk to?
Yeah, perfect. That would be fine. I can't address the uh Lake Gorm Association issue, because we're not meeting, we we had our last meeting at the end of August, and I would have no way of getting feedback from all of the.
Thing is uh.
But in general, yeah, I have.
In general, but the thing is uh, you know, I don't want to go willy-nilly or haphazardly with any speed bumps, and I I agree with Dave here.
I get that.
Yeah, but the thing is, but the thing is, we can do other things, and again, the first step is, I think, increased enforcement down there. And uh as other people suggested, maybe throw a little few tickets here and there, because it's a problematic area. So this could be a start.
We have a flashing speed limit sign as well, maybe uh.
It's all that down there.
All that for period.
Yeah, that only stayed up like a day, like a day or two, Pete, wasn't it?
It was up a week, but it only worked for like two days, and it died.
He's got one on his pole right at his property, because that's the main thing, we've had Dunbar.
It was a little aimed off too much, so it wasn't picking everybody up.
And Dunbar P D has provided the cruiser down by the beach facing up Gorm Drive. I don't know if any tickets were issued, but I think they were only there for maybe a day and and only for maybe twenty minutes, I mean, they can't stay there the whole, whole darn day, but it's usually early in the morning or late at night. And I've lived on a couple of cul-de-sacs, I've never seen a busier cul-de-sac than Holiday Shore Drive. I don't know what everybody's looking for or why they're all down there, but there's a lot of traffic on that road.
Okay. Okay, let me take that, please, Marvin. Lean, did you put some light paper work in here?
Five oh five. From last week?
Six one eight.
I really didn't have anything, I just brought it up as a subject for um poorly expenses and revenues. So I can speak on it if you'd like.
Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay, so this time of the year, uh we're a little bit behind uh with finalizing our financial fi- uh M S five thirty-five, because we've entered into a new uh contract with a different uh audit firm. Um when that happens, it's gonna happen quickly, I'm asking the board to uh decide on an overlay tax rate amount. Um typically in the past, that number was set extremely low. That number is explained by the auditors at an exit conference is to cover the cost of any abatement money that is given back to the consumer resident um at in April of the following year. So we have to set that as part of our tax rate setting. La- last year, we set it at about uh sixty thousand. The final numbers adjusted, um when the the tax rate numbers are calculated, we encumbered about fifty-five thousand dollars because of the uh revaluer and the potential of our us getting a larger number of abatements. Um we still have pending um um abatements with the utility company, Eversource. That's an ongoing thing, I get their applications annually, um so we probably have a a something that might.
So last year, we did sixty?
We did sixty, and I probably only returned a less, about less than thirty, but um.
Wouldn't we be safe to go down to fifty this year?
I think, yeah, between twenty-five and fifty would be more than enough, um just so the board's aware of it and they um the taxpayers are aware of it, twenty-five thousand dollars um overlay is gonna be a six cent impact on the taxes. So if we, as we increase it, it's going, even though we try hard to maintain a level um tax rate, uh some of the things are out of our control, and so when we're looking at fifty cents, we're looking at a twelve cent increase on the taxes.
Okay. What's the board's favor for that? We did sixty last year.
It's not a reval, the year this year.
Nope.
That's what I was looking at.
Bring it down to thirty then, or?
What do you think about thirty?
Thirty would be more than fair, I don't anticipate, because there aren't any big changes with property assessments, it would only be.
Not much more coming from public service?
It just, I, I definitely get that one every single year, but as far as the general public, um there's typically not more than a half dozen, if 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 that, on an off-year.
All right, so the consensus from the board is to do thirty?
Thirty thousand, okay. I will let the D R A know that when I, when she calls me.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, Don Larson, reads across Dunbarton flags.
Yes. What I have here is the type of flag and pole that we would put on. Fifty-eight telephone poles in the area, basically from the twenty or thirty mile an hour sign this way all the way down to the thirty mile an hour sign on uh South Stark Highway, Robert Rogers to the twenty-five mile an hour speed sign, three in front of uh Center Cemetery, or Paige's Corner Cemetery, and four in front of uh East Cemetery. Total of fifty-eight flags. And basically what I'm looking for tonight is the phone company, I'm working with them. And uh I realize we're a private enterprise, but it's for the town also. If there's some way that uh the four holidays that we're gonna put them up is Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and Veterans Day, basically two weeks uh at a time. And the phone company will do the initial mounting and the first holiday and everything, but uh after that, why, we're gonna have to, you know, pay for some labor involved.
And they had no issue to put on?
Huh?
They had no issues?
No, no, it's not the issue, you gotta go to Eversource, I have to go to Eversource.
That's what I was gonna mention, you should talk to the people in Litchfield, because they have that set up. What you're talking about, they had to go to Eversource, and I don't remember what the chairman said, who they had talked to, but.
Lean has given me the paperwork on that, because when we put them on the common, same thing there, so. But I've got all the poll numbers, I've put in the the street numbers and, you know, the house numbers that are in front of them, things on this line, so I'm getting to that stage where I'll get, you know, permission from Eversource to put these up. And partnering with the phone company, there's already the uh uh relationship there, so. I I think that will be it, but it, uh the flag is a three by five. It's uh all hand, or it's all stitched, double-stitched on all the stripes and everything else, a good quality flag, made in America, same with the flag pole, made in America, and I can do it for under fifty dollars per pole.
So would it be high enough where you, if someone walking by can't vandalize?
Right, well, that's our, we've got to use the lift to put them up and that, so. And, you know, they'll be mounted, you know, at an angle like so. And these are uh non-tangled, uh you'll so you can see that, you know, we won't have to worry about getting them all tangled up. You don't want them too high where they'll catch into the wires if they blow up, you know, with the wind.
No, I'm all for it, I I know the the towns I go through that have those, I think they look very patriotic.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a nice thing to see the smaller towns, I know Duboston does it, and Gothstown's doing it now.
Hooks it.
Hooks it, it's a, it gives a nice look to the small New England towns, I think.
Right, and, you know, with a quality flag, you know, by taking them up and putting them down instead of leaving them all summer and that, makes it special. And that, so uh basically what I'm looking for, if possible, a grant or something along this lines to help cover the cost of install, uninstall, and that each year of uh fifteen to two thousand dollars, somewhere in there.
Grant from who? Grant from the Selectmen? We don't give grants.
Well.
We have budgets that we have.
A budget, a budget, uh something along that.
Even after they're originally put up, you think it'll cost that much?
Yeah, well, that's what I've got to find out is the cost and that, but.
Can you get me a more accurate cost?
I'll meet with David Montgomery, and uh I've had a very positive response, I uh talked with Scott and stuff like that, and he's kind of the gold between right now.
I haven't talked with the other Selectmen about this, but if we come up with an accurate amount of money that seems reasonable, what I'd like to do is add it to something to do with the Recreation Fund, so that it's part of the fund you guys are already drawing from.
We've done the same thing for the veteran flags for the cemeteries, we get uh, what is it called, a?
The cemetery flags, they're fully murdely.
We get a gross of flags every other year, and it's about three hundred dollars, and the Selectmen have always pulled that three hundred dollar expense out of building maintenance account.
Okay. What I'd like to do is adjust our numbers when we do our budget this year.
With accurate numbers.
Yeah, to have it covered. Fred, you got some?
Yeah, uh I'm not uh against this, but what happened with the flags and the poles that we get for the two-fiftieth, we had on the poles?
The the mounts are still there.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're uh, they've got adjustable band around them plus uh three or four screws in them.
Yeah.
I think there's a box.
But that's just one area, see, we're gonna go all, uh start, you know, just past Barnhill Road, Bernard Road.
Already Dunbar, you might have to get permission from Unitil, we have two power companies in there. Eversource and Unitil, in, Unitil's on East Dunbar.
Okay, I I I got the poll numbers off of them, but uh they're not the same uh series like they have with, like on here, where it's thirteen, two eighty-nine.
Right.
Thirteen dash whatever, but there, those four poles there.
Because sometimes when we have trees on the wires and stuff, we gotta call Unitil over in East Dunbar, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where their line stops, but might have to check with them over there.
I'm on, I'm on Unitil, so it goes up Montalona.
Good point, good point.
This is a work in progress, and hopefully for May of next year is when we're gonna kick it off.
Well, it's a good time to come to us, Don, because we're coming into our budget season, so if we need an adjustment, we can do it. I would just like to have an accurate, I know the first time up, there's gonna be more work. Like you said, the bracket will be there after that, and then you're just putting poles in. I wouldn't think it'd be that much money after that.
Yeah, so we'll take care of it, and, you know, once I get the final figure in that, why, or a figure from the phone company, where they'll have a better idea how many hours it's gonna take and things like that, man-hours, and uh it might not be that bad, you know.
Is our phone company doing it?
Huh?
Dunbarton Telephone Company?
Yeah, yeah, because they've, I've started partnering with them with Wi-Fi on the commons and stuff like that for cross-promotion and that, they've been very good to work with, so.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you, Don.
Don, before you go, this is, just take this home with you, okay?
What is this?
Take a peek right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take a peek before you go.
Okay.
Okay, um I had Lean put this on, transfer station services with COVID um a little bit on the rise this year. I wonder if we didn't want to go back to having the residents do their own trash, and not have our helper. If we lose employees down there, we might not be able to replace, because my thought.
What employees?
Just at the hopper. No, we already recycle all our own plastics and stuff anyway, but at the hopper, my thought was, for right now to back off. I was hoping to get some feedback from Woody, but I guess he'll be in later.
He he said he was not gonna make it this week.
Oh, he wasn't, okay. So, um that being said, what's the board's flavor?
I don't have a problem.
Want to try and do that for a little bit?
Yeah, it is on the rise, what is it, seventeen?
Yeah, I think it's. And I just thought, you know, we have so few employees down there. If one gets affected, it might affect several of them. Instead of shutting it down, just have the residents do their own. If one gets affected, it might affect several of them, instead of shutting it down, just have the residents do their own trash, the main hopper.
You just put a sign up, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you also want to talk about the shop?
No, I don't wanna open it back up now.
All right.
I think once we get through this, this last hurdle here of COVID, I hope we can do some different things. Okay, now, I'm gonna get these man blocks out. Okay, we have requests from the planning administrator to write on our town letterhead that we'll accept the maintenance responsibility with the new road for the development countryside estate subdivision. This was spoke about at the planning board workshop last night. And we wanna make it real simple, since countryside estate subdivision do may concern, the town of Dunbar agrees to accept maintenance responsibility of the new roadway associated with this subdivision upon its completion and acceptance as a town road.
For the record, we assume that every road we accept and take on, we maintain their effort, so this is a formality.
Something they need to get through the state level for the permission of the road.
Yep.
You're signing on behalf of Dunbar?
Yeah.
Like the alteration of terrain if that's required for?
Yep, and another thing for countryside estate subdivision, we're going to sign off on the road bond of two point eight five million dollars submitted by RS Oddly. And I'm gonna sign that in reference to the select board, and that's also been looked at and approved by our town engineer, the road agent, and the planning board.
The emotion on that?
Yep, I guess we're all signing it, so, I'll read the approval. Site improvement road bond for countryside subdivision, we are concerned at the town of Dunbar, a selectman meeting held this Thursday, October seventh, twenty twenty-one. Motion by Dave Dahl, seconded by Mike Kaminsky to accept the recommended of the planning board to approve the road bond in the amount of two million two hundred eighty-five thousand. So I make the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of the numbers for this road bond have been reviewed by our engineer and the road agent as well. Pass this one to you guys. We have a, an estimate from Craig Miller. An estimate in the range of three hundred and fifty dollars to repair some items down at the transfer station. Some PVC that's been dented, cracked, scuffed, broken, and he shows us pictures of several different areas. So I'm gonna say that we go ahead and give him the approval to get this stuff done and clean that up.
Yeah, I agree with you, when it's such a small amount, and sometimes we know what we mean on timing fashion. I like to make sure, if it's a small amount of less than five hundred dollars, maybe delegate the authority to the town managers for something like this, so we don't saw progress from the town, I'm just thinking a lot.
I think they gotta come through us, so.
Well, eventually come through us, but the thing is, but the thing is, if it's an urgent repair, I don't think the town manager is well empowered to do some of this stuff. I'll make a motion that we approve the repairs for the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars estimate.
There's a small fee on there, thirty dollars, so why don't we put no more than four hundred dollars on there?
I'm in my motion to four hundred dollars, approximately, no more than.
Really, the two for thirty dollars, give or take, for fasteners. It's all the typical areas by the drive-through, people bump in, scuff in. We have a request here that was brought to my attention today from one of our town employees, that has worked some additional hours for us during the COVID time in our town offices here, because we were short-staffed. Doing so, they went over their retirement allotment hours, COVID hours don't count towards those hours, so we're gonna write a quick letter here to duck that amount.
Wish she gets taxed.
Yep. We also have a notice here from Stephanie Alexander, and Donna gave us this request for the regarding Dunbarton hazmat mitigation plan updates. Looks like it's gonna recur sometime between January and February twenty twenty-two.
Just aside, last week, just a point of order, Central New Hampshire, Central New Hampshire Regional Planning also worked with us with the the plan to improve the Page's Corner. Sergeant Remar is basically will be our representative, he has no problem with that.
Okay.
That was brought up last meeting, and he emailed, and said it was no problem.
Okay, good. On October fourteenth of this month, we'll be holding a public hearing to accept a gift, other than money from a person here. This will be for the gift from the Hammonds, Joy Hammond and Michael Elms. It's a donation of a twenty-twenty moto tractor, off-road rail bike, valued at eighty-nine hundred and forty-nine dollars to the Dunbar Fire Department. These are better known as a Ruko. They typically hold one or two people and can go through the woods. As Fred knows, we could do that over on Twist Hill Road at the fire we had last year, so I was pretty excited to see this come along. And that public hearing will be at our next meeting. I signed this one in here already. The one for dollar. Okay, bring it back for public comment. Okay, thank you guys for coming in. We're gonna go into non-public.
Can we before, I have just one thing to bring to the boards.
Oh, you know, we could also go around the selectmen too, because they're probably gone, go ahead, Lean.
All right, I got a telephone call yesterday from Health Trust to let us know that where we're going for twenty twenty-two health and dental rates. The health medical rates for twenty twenty-two will be going down to eight, down eight point one percent. And then the Health Trust dental rates will be going down one point five percent. There will be no change in the long-term disability, and the six, short-term disability will go up six cents, from thirty-two cents to thirty-nine cents. So that was a good memo from them, and then I also received an email through their website, they do everything electronically now, and there will be some surplus from the twenty twenty year that we can expect, and we should, unfortunately, they noticed this and the information with the actual numbers won't be here until next week, early next week, so I'll be able to get on the portal and then print that for you guys for next week.
Okay, anything from the other squad?
I, I've been working on, working with the possibility of hauling trash from our transfer station, just getting some quotes. I've called Bo, the one who's currently doing our trash now, talked to the owner, said he would get something back to me, he has not. I did a phone call, he had blown me off a little bit, I don't know why, and so I'm still working that issue. I'm also working with Waste Management, headquartered out of Bedford, and I'm gonna give Lean a, they need data to make a proposal. And so Lean, it's gonna be, working with Woody, he's gonna have to provide us some data of what we, what we're doing and where we're hauling and stuff. And they'll take everything everywhere, but he'll make a proposal once we get a data call to him. So he followed up with me, and I said I'm gonna get back with him, but I have to give Lean the request for data. So those are two outstanding actions that I'm working on, just so we can look at options, and I'm not saying we have to do any, but we want to look at options, okay? But those are two companies, Waste Management is definitely, they've seen the one business, our business.
Good to have options, what do you got, Tom?
Oh, I wanted to thank Lean for making that change with the Historical Society and making it so that they can just click on it and go to their Facebook page.
Oh, good.
So it doesn't confuse things with Historical, there is Historical Society.
Right.
Thanks again, Lean for doing that.
It's pretty easy, pretty quick fix, so it worked out well.
Good, okay, now I'll make a motion to go to non-public for RST ninety-one dash A three, numeral two, paragraph C.